The Port of Township Trustee Board Meeting, November 19th, 2024. Uh, Rokoff?
Cheryl T. Ash is here.
I'm five years.
Ryan Hill here.
Approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Cheryl, yes.
Ryan Hill.
Uh, approval of the minutes, we have approved three of it.
Yeah, that's right. Now, which one of these was amended? Sammy? Which mean minutes?
The one in front of me.
Uh, okay, let me see here. Oh, it's the very first one, October 15th. Did everybody see Ryan's email? Same mall he made to it. Okay, as long as you saw it then. Um, if you want to review the amended, but uh, Sammy made that update to the, those minutes. And that is the one you will sign.
Okay. So I make the motion that we approve the minutes for October 15th, 2024 as amended.
Oh, second?
All in favor?
Cheryl, yes.
I'm a yes.
Ryan Hill.
Executive session minutes of November 4th, 2024.
Then due to the comments.
I move we accept the um, Township Board for say your counting the minutes of the executive session, November 4th, 2024.
Oh, second?
All in favor?
Cheryl, yes.
Okay, the term approved, regular session for November 4th, 2024.
That's the one.
Uh, well, the executive was very short. It was just the one pager, so. They were both very short, to be honest with you. November 4th and we had one agenda item.
Oh, that one, yes, okay.
Oh, no, I don't want any of that color.
You did.
I can sweep out just a little notion to accept.
No, we need to do the November 4th ones.
Right, that's what we're doing now.
Okay.
Motion to accept.
He's accepting of regular session.
Hmm, yeah.
I was, I, I read it for the executive session.
Right.
That was the one we just did.
Awesome. Now on November 4th. Any second?
They're both November 4th.
Oh.
Yeah, both November 4th, why is there a second?
Don't we have to do them separate?
You did. You've done, you've done the executive session already? This is for the regular session.
Let me have it on here, so.
Ryan made the motion to the session. For the regular session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment. What do you hear?
For them, right? No, public comment is not them. They are an agenda item.
Okay, public comment is down closed.
New business, 340 Columbia Community slash Neighborhood Center, Center Survey Results. These guys on the call here are with J2 Marketing, who um, are the ones who can, can design, um, conducted and analyzed that survey for us. And so they're here to present on their results. So, Terry, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Austin, you want to say anything before we start?
Uh, I'll just say hello. My name is Austin. I'm the experienced director at award-winning J2 Marketing. Uh, and I'm very excited to be meeting here and sharing the results of the survey with you guys. Um, speaking today will be Terry Lindhart. He is our lead strategist and lead analyst here. Uh, so we are excited to kind of walk through the survey results that we've received back and uh, yeah, look at what the data is telling us. So, looking forward to diving in.
Alright, um. Oh, now I'm having trouble. Um, okay. Um, sorry, um. I should have practiced this. Um. I'm having trouble with my presentation.
Uh, is that with screen sharing?
No, it's with uh, Teams. I don't know what to do.
I'm just, we need three.
You need lines here, but I'm gonna just sign right here and date, yes. I'll have Sam for the next one.
We're over on North Shore.
Terry, you just want to share the presentation with me and I can share on screen?
We think just.
I'm sorry, what?
You just want to share the presentation with me and I can go and share on screen?
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I'm sorry, um.
One's here?
I've never had trouble with Teams before.
Briefcase.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, thank you. My wife wants to say hi to Jason.
Just, just go ahead and shoot me an email with the slide deck.
Yeah, yeah, it's coming.
Okay.
Alright, that's okay. I have to sign in a minute. I know. Here. Noted.
What's today's date?
19. Even though if you look at this.
You want me to bring it up, Terry? I've got it.
You do? Uh, yeah, I apologize. I have never had trouble with Teams and I do presentations all the time. And I have no idea what's going on. It's, I think the wifi I'm on is blocking it. But yeah, if you wanted to, Jason, it'd be awesome. I apologize.
You guys want to just end the meeting right now and let's not talk to these guys every day?
Wait, how much did we pay them?
I don't know if we paid them yet. I don't know if we paid them yet.
I'm gonna need a refund, it's um.
Stop paying them.
I'm so, yeah, no, I, I.
Look how nervous you're making him.
I know, it's like uh, something. Yeah, it's, it's evidently my wifi's got a, where I am is, okay, I sent it to you uh, as well, Austin, so.
Great.
Back on again.
Wow. Well, let me start and say thank you for the opportunity, even though the presentation start isn't going very well. Uh, we had a great uh, survey. It's a really solid uh, survey and, and Ashley who's uh, PhD in stats from Vanderbilt. Uh, she did her doctorate in stats, cleaned the data. It was really clean. So sometimes we do these public uh, projects and uh, it's kind of, of um, uh, you, you get, you get some suspicious ones. And we only had four that we had to clean up. So are we good to go now?
Yeah, we're good. It should, uh, it should be showing right now.
Okay, and Jason, are you at the controls?
Yep, just tell me when to move forward. I'm on executive.
Yeah, next one, there we go. So we had a N of 427, and I just want to start off with, uh, we kind of do quick and, this is gonna go fast, so I do a lot of color coding, just so it's easy to remember visually. And uh, just the thing that struck out to both of us was that uh, there's a two to one ratio in support of the concept of a community center. And so in spite of all the things we talked about along the way, we want to start with that. And we try to start with that, that the community is supportive of this, and we'll show you uh, in what ways and um, a little bit of what parts of the community, although uh, this is dangerous to talk about, and I'll show you why in a second. Um, three and four, uh, anticipated using the center at least a few times per year. That's the general population of the survey. Again, the survey is widely distributed. Thank you for your efforts on that. Uh, about 15% were strongly opposed to the idea. Uh, they're the ones that'll be the, they're the loudest in the open-ended, but they don't carry the weight of the survey uh, that, in, in our uh, report. I did put in blue that one of the things that was important to the community and was actually statistically significant is the idea of a tiered rental fee, that this will be an affordable uh, available facility, that it's not gonna be something that is gonna be too costly or for um, formal events, you're gonna see that it's actually gonna connect well to how families are thinking about uh, about the project. One of the things I just also want to warn as we dive into the numbers is that there's no statistically significant difference for any demographic statement. And Ashley and I went over this two or three times, just to make sure. So if you see a number, it's representative of the population unless designated otherwise. So that means you can't look at a number and say, well, I wonder if this group thinks differently. Uh, the data, when I teach research at the graduate level, I always used to tell people, don't, don't say anything that data's not telling you. So, as we head to the next slide here, these are the three uh, main points that I wanted you to see uh, for the project, though. Our summary is that taken together, there is the perceived, the perceived investment and benefit to the downtown community is worth any potential cost. And so for the respondents, especially among supporters, the center is seen as an opportunity to create more community and connect with the arts. And at, and at the same time, we did hear enough concern from the community that uh, there are some things that probably need to be addressed as the messaging goes out, and that was the important uh, thing to think about. So on the next slide then, uh, we see that there is kind of an executive summary. Most non-supporters, in fact, I would say this deals with a large percent of the concerns that were voiced was about the cost or especially taxes for the project. Uh, and then they would often turn and say, there's another pressing need elsewhere. Um, the, across all levels of support, the idea of a, a large fee was in question. And so even among the strongest supporters, uh, less than 50% said they would pay. So around half of the people were, were unsure about the fee questions and just kind of wanted to see how this was gonna go as it moves forward. But again, as we said earlier, a tiered structure had strong support. Uh, some of the other things that were emphasized by the community were, concerns were security or safety around the facility. And also uh, the idea of programming for diverse populations beyond just uh, event rentals that are formal functions. So uh, I also thought that it was interesting how uh, warm people were to the idea of making sure that it integrated well with the outdoor spaces, particularly along the river. And I think that'll be the attractive thing. Uh, that you're, the location of it and how it integrates with the trail there in particular, with some mention of that. And the river will be super important. So we have some basic charts then on the next uh, slide that is uh, just some overview of the demographics. So uh, a largely white population responded there with about 12% uh, black or African-American, a little short of uh, uh, what you want in a survey and uh, the Hispanic population around uh, 6%. The next slide then shows an age breakdown, which is uh, skews a little heavily to the older side. That's not uncommon sometimes in community projects. There's a motivation for those of us who are older to take slide, to take surveys because we have uh, strong opinions, but that's still not a terrible breakdown for uh, what you want to see from a population. The next slide then shows uh, resi-, uh, let's see, what is it? Yeah, residential distribution. Uh, heavily in South Bend as opposed to the others uh, there. And these numbers are uh, provided elsewhere in a report that the township has been provided. So you can see the specific numbers here. And it's significant that over 40% have been in the community uh, over 21 years. Household population then, uh, or household income skews to the middle. Uh, it's a, it's a fairly uh, representative bell curve uh, there. And a lot of, we played around a little bit with income on some of the answers. Again, nothing statistically significant and everything uh, representative there. But that's just to show you that the population uh, and how they represent. The next slide then is uh, the benefits that people see and there. And we wanted to start with this. So the idea that there's a continued improvement of downtown, this was voiced in the open-ended as well. People are enjoying what they see downtown. They like that things are happening there. As a resident of South Bend, I'm enjoying seeing the progress uh, when we're downtown doing different things. The idea that it will attract more people to downtown, it has more opportunity for people to do things. It's another option there, the local entertainment venue. Uh, they see that as a, a positive thing. And that it's gonna improve the Riverside area there, especially if you look across from the other side, it'll look really cool there on the bluff from Howard Park, and it's something new to do. Fairly straightforward answers. The next slide then talks about the uh, this is the percentages of strongly opposed. So about one in four, a little less than that, have some opposition to a, uh, 14 and a half percent would be strongly opposed. And we'll break down, we did a decent amount of study of, of the populations between those who are supportive and those who are in opposition here. So the next slide then would, has uh, the naming of the center, which was one of the things that we uh, uh, mentioned uh, there. And we, the top one was a Riverside Event Center, and we put the word "event center" in before we, the change to thinking of it as a community center. And because we had already been collecting data, we didn't change the, the selection to Riverside Community Center. But that certainly would follow as a logical progression if that name was attractive to y'all in, in the end. Rivers Edge Event Center, about half like that. And then there's a strong drop off to Porridge Point and the others. So you can see the naming of it uh, and identifying it as along the river would be important uh, to the, the naming of it. Then the next slide uh, has uh, some, how they see uh, the usage there. And uh, we broke it down a little bit to the five areas. Those who strongly support at the top would see them using it a, a few times a year. And uh, this takes a little bit of time to, to look at it and think it through. Uh, the somewhat support seems to be the highest uh, interested in using it. And then you can see the neutral starts to fade and, and the somewhat opposed and strongly opposed don't see themselves using it. And there's a reason for this, I think, a little bit. And we're gonna show you uh, why that, uh, where that comes from in a little bit downtown. The, the two groups uh, use the downtown area differently, which I think is fascinating there. The next slide then is a chart that shows.
Yeah, well, Ryan's pointing out something here, Terry.
Like a bunch of the ones on the strongly opposed and somewhat opposed are like, no, I'll still use it.
Yeah, that's right. Oh, yeah, I forgot to mention that. That's true.
They know that too.
If, in fact, I got a whole slide, I got a whole slide of uh, how they see themselves using it. And uh, they are still interested. Yeah, it's uh, about one in four of them, yeah. So, and it's, that's, that's what you want, right? You want people to say, uh, I mean, we all do this. We get in the meeting, I don't like something, and yeah, I'll still be a part of the group, you know, at the end uh, with whatever suits me. So potential uh, types of community events, supporters would attend, community gatherings, cultural events, art exhibition. Art was strong in the project. Uh, it's not enough to um, do much differently about, but as you go about the development of the center, if you do, thinking through the art piece, the artistic uh, side of it, the usages of it, and how it connects to um, the aesthetics would be important. Educational workshops and all the way down. I think it's uh, interesting that a lot of the uh, of these have uh, you know, some aesthetic appeal to it, like the musical theater performance, a birthday party. Birthday parties come out stronger later here. There's some, a general, general curve there. This is the, the group that said, hey, I'll still use it even though I'm opposed to it. So they see it much more as a, a artistic and they would see an art exhibition or a reason to go for it that has a social function to it. Uh, musical theater, like the top four have three, that would be more about a performance or some sort of fine arts event there, uh, and wedding reception.
Very much.
So here's some interest. I'm sorry.
Very much luxury events versus everyday needs. Is kind of how I see that breakdown.
Yeah.
Well, and.
Yeah, and there's enough.
I have a little bit of a thought towards that too. When you see um, when you see the art ex- exhibition, community gatherings, um, that's definitely more of the artsy crowd. Um, and so there, there is an idea here of, I think there's a misunderstanding of the use of the event with the people who are posting it um, a, a, as, as far as the space. And so these are the same people who go, oh, well, you know, we need another coffee shop where I can go ahead and hang my art and sell it. Um, and that's not exactly what we're looking for, for this event space, or, or who we're trying to cater to as far as our demographic. So just small note by me.
Alright, well, some interesting findings here that I think will frame a little bit of this. And this is the importance of a tiered structure uh, and broken down by the five levels of support. And you can see that those who strongly support it and somewhat support it are also the biggest proponents of having a tiered structure. And the reason is, these are people from the community who don't, who aren't necessarily high-income earners in general. Again, I'm telling you not to break them down by by demographics, but I'm letting you know that they lean that way and that you can, you're gonna see in some of the charts that these are people from, this is gonna be a very personal space. They use it for family-oriented type of functions. So, uh, and it also ties to what they've paid for rentals in the past. The next chart then breaks down um, uh, a few things. And this introduces uh, what is it that people come downtown to do? And dining is by far and away the highest thing, the most important thing people do downtown. Using public services is second, and then there's a strong drop off to socializing with friends and family. We'll come back to that one in a minute. And attending community events and the entertainment venues. So we said, hey, if people are coming downtown for dining, on the next slide, we said, where are they going to eat? And we decided to rank the the restaurants that they're attending at. And so Cafe Navara, Fiddler's Hearth, Chickory, and Pegs are all one, two, three, and four. However, when you delineate out those who are supportive of coming downtown, Pegs becomes number one, Fiddler's Hearth remains number two, and L Street Kitchen pops up to uh, the top spot. So that's an interesting difference for who is coming downtown to dine and for what. And it indicates a little bit, again, I think of the kind of people who see the support of the demographic who sees this community center as beneficial to their family. So, the next slide then. Uh, yeah, go ahead.
No, it's not a question. I just want to throw something in here. Um, African-Americans come down for three reasons. One is to use the public library or governmental building, or to eat at Linden Grill. Hmm. And uh, which is an African-American soul food restaurant. And I'm just saying that because there is a demographic that most of, most African-Americans, probably the only place they might go is a chocolate cafe. But you know, I mean, you get a lot of African-Americans downtown that won't show up in this.
Only only 10% responded on the circuit. Only 10% African-Americans responded on the circuit. That was pretty clearly impacted.
Certainly.
Yeah. That's good. Thank you for sharing that. There, there is, that needs to be in there and a higher number of respondents. We would have been able to discover some of those trends for sure. Uh, there's a direct correlation, uh, speaking of stats, that uh, exists between people who feel like promoting downtown South Bend and their opinion of the proposed, propose, the proposed center. So the more positive for downtown South Bend, the more likely people are to support the community center idea. The less likely they promote downtown South Bend, the less likely they were to support the community center. So, what we found was those people who express opposition to the center are also more likely to be detractors in recommending visiting downtown South Bend. Uh, and those are the numbers there. And in contrast, those who support the project are more likely to be promoters uh, visiting, uh, visiting downtown South Bend. So there's a, there's a strong correlation in general about that vibe. And I'm not sure where it comes from, but there are some correlations. The next slide points out a few other interesting things related to the two separate groups. So, those opposed were more likely to be downtown daily. The opposed appear to have a strong interaction and knowledge even of the development process related to downtown South Bend. Those who were neutral in general were downtown once a month or less, not very often. So it's a shrug of the shoulders to some of this stuff. Those who are supportive though, were more likely to dine downtown. They were more likely to socialize with friends and family downtown and community, attend community events downtown than those who are opposed. So the supporters see downtown as a place to enjoy socially in comparison to those who are opposed. Now, I'm not trying to demean or to, you know, uh, characterize the opposition in that way, but it's important to see there's a general uh, feeling uh, about downtown in general that seems to correlate with their feelings towards a community center. Alright, next slide then would have um, only about 10% of those who are opposed say they socialize or attend community events downtown South Bend. And I double-checked this two or three times because I found that to be uh, really interesting. Um, just 5% of those opposed who have rented an event center for a birthday party in comparison to 24% of supporters. Now, I don't know what that means. It's difficult to infer, wise said, but that's a, that's a pretty decent contrast between two different groups as to the role of birthday parties and um, uh, those who oppose are more likely to rent a facility for a business meeting. And the only reason that I dove in, or we dove in a little bit to this opposed and support is that we're trying to nuance out a little bit of just some sources of things we need to be attentive to as we think about messaging and going forward. So we know that taxes, the costs, safety factors, parking, those type of logistic aesthetics matter. But also, there is a general opinion about downtown and what we do downtown that correlates to the idea of a community center. And the next slide will reinforce this a little more. Oh, these are more, sorry, that's the wrong slide. So uh, not seeing what's coming, and I apologize for that. Uh, if you don't, if you do not visit downtown, what are some of the reasons? So these are the reasons people don't come downtown, that driving or parking is too difficult. That was pretty persistent in the entire project a little bit. We heard that parking or the perception of it is being too difficult. Uh, the shopping, the lack of retail options, safety concerns, those are the top three. Like, if you want to say, what are the top three? Uh, those are it. The next slide then talks about uh, what you would see the potential community center usage for. And again, you can see the birthday parties uh, rose to the top, community gatherings, club meetings, family reunions, weddings. Five of the top four, and you could argue even that the second one would be very family-oriented, very uh, positive to um, people who said, yeah, I'd likely rent it. Well, would I rent it for it? Well, these would be it. And you can see that formal things uh, like a business conference would be toward the bottom. So just a few more slides and I'll be done here. Um, we, I, I dove into this idea of renting spaces. And so here is why a tiered system matters. Those who rented an event uh, over six and 10, about two-thirds paid $250 or less. So pricing that's gonna be 500 or less is gonna be uh, really important for the community center going forward. And it's comfortable for what people have paid. We asked then on the next slide what people have rented in the area. It's not everybody is from, you know, the area and renting it, but here were the main rental facilities in the region. There were a bunch of them who were at two and one. But the Century Center in Howard Park and Library. Now, one of the things about the Century Center that came out in the open-ended is that anytime people would say, why do we need a new community center? We have the Century Center. Is, they would always do the appeals, say, I don't know if we need this, the tax is tonight, and then they would turn and mention the Century Center. So as we go forward with messaging or thinking about this, the, the, those who know about this project know that it's different in how, in its role and its function than the Century Center, and that'll be an important part of the conversation. And then the next and final slide, yeah.
I was gonna, there's a major cost difference. If you look at what it costs to rent Century Center and then, like, take the library, to rent the big ballroom is $300. You know what I'm saying? But you can rent other rooms for way less to throw a birthday party in. So. Hmm? Yeah, oh, you go with the library to throw a birthday party. And uh, I've known people who've done it. I'm just simply saying that um, I don't think you can compare Century Center per se with um.
Well, and that's part of the problem with our initial comments, is when we made the comment of event center, that's what it sounded like.
That's what people were thinking of.
Right, and that's not, that's not even.
Yeah. Because if you want to look at the library's prices for renting their rooms, it's very reasonable.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it's very, it's very doable to on, on an individual basis, right? Where Century Center is more geared towards businesses and business rentals. And, and it's, it's just a completely different scale. Everything from pricing to the size of the space um, to honestly, the approachability of the space. Right? It's gonna be completely different. So, uh, as one of my team members would communicate, uh, the Century Center would be like strapping a rocket to an apple. Uh, it's just, it doesn't even make sense. So, having something like the Century or, 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 or like, like this event center, this uh, community center just speaks so much more to the everyday person who thinks, oh, I could afford that for a birthday party versus Century, Century Center would just be blown out of the water.
Yeah, and then uh, thank you. Uh, I agree, and I think that's uh, important as, as you go forward to, to remember. Uh, finally, I asked, uh, we asked a question on just what some features are important for a proposed event center. I think some of the survey came on the heels of my wife and I putting on a 60th anniversary party at a community center elsewhere in Indiana for my in-laws. And so fresh on my mind was this uh, question, because you know, if you've ever done an event, what's important. And uh, catering kitchen, rear, rearview terrace, outdoor event space, ample parking. Parking comes up all the time. Uh, internet and technology, a lot of people put "easy to use", and you've been somewhere where the technology is so confusing and you're trying to show a slideshow of memories, and it's hard to do. So that was it as well. So that's the general overview of the survey. It was a, 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 a good process. I appreciate you uh, letting us do it and to help you uh, frame the conversation. Again, large community support for it, very tied to family. Uh, and I think the, the concerns people have are easily answered going forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Board questions about any of that? Maybe just a word, Terry, on the integrity of the poll. I know that came up. Um, it was a concern for the board. Can you just note on how you ensure that there's no manipulation of the poll?
Yeah, so uh, so I did my doctorate at Purdue, so we learned all the good stuff in stats and, and Ashley is a PhD in sta- statistics. And so she cleans the data. We go through, we look for repeated. So uh, we had four people that took it twice. We caught them and we deleted their second responses uh, out. And then we look for, we have, uh, the software we use has And then we look for, we have, uh, the software we use has all sorts of ability to identify bad actors in that. So the integrity of the responses are good. And then we handle it through a proper statistical means and let the findings correlate. And we don't say what it's not saying. So that's how we handle that. It was, uh, I was, we've done a project out of New York where we got overrun by a bot because they were offering an incentive of $500 for a drawing. It was crazy. Like, uh, it was bad. So we're, we have mechanisms in place now to make sure that people aren't cheating the system.
What was the sample size again?
Four twenty-seven.
Okay. To me, what I think the main issue is, and this is just me. I think we need to emphasize, you know, like I told you how when we had the, um, coat giveaway, I asked people, you know, if we had a center, what, and people were saying things like exercise, you know, have exercise classes. Other one, you know, I mean, people had all these other things you could use it for Monday through Friday. And all that would make it used a lot. And so I think one of the things is we have to help people to understand, we're not building this so you can have weddings on the weekend. We see other uses for it also Monday through Friday. But so it doesn't sit vacant on the weekend. It can make a little money for us. We can rent it out for weddings or birthdays or anniversaries or graduation.
I will say even the staff over the last few weeks, there's been multiple moments where we're like, if we had space, we could be doing this here, or we could be doing this program here. I mean, even small things, they, one township was doing a breakfast with Santa. Low income kids come in, get a whole meal, they get it. And it was like, well, it would be nice if we could do that.
Yeah, sure would be. Because it's about $15.
Turkey giveaways, like we, yeah, there's all kinds of things really, uh, the fire territory swearing in ceremony, you know?
Well, and again, the reality is we are moving here and it is a philosophy of government to make it an accessible community space rather than a gated only, you know, by invite government office. And I mean, that is a big, but I think the idea that we're just building, no, we're not. We are moved into our space now. We want to convert it to be welcoming to the community. That's just a whole different conversation.
So the top line I got, Terry, was 75% are supportive or, or neutral. The use, the most interested use, I mean, it sounds like it's the most interested folks are the folks that we're talking about. Certain, you know, doing this for the middle, low income, normal, average YOs. You know, they want it for community space and family space. And one of the big selling points for folks, if you're anti downtown South Bend, you're anti this project. If you're, if you're pro South Bend, you view this as project as, as helping South Bend, bringing people down. That, that was my take overview. Is that, would you say that's your summary?
Yeah. But I think there's also.
Yeah, I think so.
I think there's also something that's showing in there that people are aware. You know, our clientele up until now had mostly been lower income people. And I think some of that survey shows when it talks about a tiered amount is that people are aware that low income people don't get to have certain things like us middle class people do. And, uh, um, and so I think that is one of the things I know that I've been pushing when people ask me about it was yes, you know, weddings on the weekend, blah, blah. We're going to get a tiered, but I say to them, they're like people who can't afford exercise classes because there's a small fee, but it's still a fee, you know? And there's just a whole bunch of other things we could probably offer here that requires space that would be used for our clientele.
And that's actually a question that I think was probably missing from that survey. Have you ever used township services before? Right? Because looking at those numbers, I would say probably we didn't have many people who come here for help that answered that.
Right. But at the coat, at the coat thing, when people came to get their coats for their kids, I asked questions about what they wanted. And a lot of what they wanted is what you would get at the YWCA or the old well is moved out. And, and just lots of places where you have to pay to get something. And, uh, one lady said to me, I don't know why, um, the mayor doesn't have something for senior citizens. You know what I mean? There's nothing on the south side of town. And then somebody else was from like the, the, the north east, you know what I mean? So I heard a lot of stuff about people have tons of ideas, what they would like to see in the center. And that would make it usable Monday through Friday. And the weekends for the birthday parties and the wedding receptions are, it's just a plus.
So, uh, next steps. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Alton.
No, I was gonna say, yeah, and even, even working in some type of, uh, program like that into the website where it's really easy for either small businesses, entrepreneurs, or you know, people who don't have any type of space, who want to hold some type of event for their business to be able to do that really easily. I, I love, I've, I've been to the downtown libraries website. I love how easy it is to look at spaces and book spaces throughout the week. So having that on the website would just be such a huge, uh, it would, it would be lowering a lot of barriers for people to be, be, before they even come downtown, to be able to look at a space, check its availability, see the pricing on it, uh, and reserve that for their business throughout the week, I think just would be awesome.
The prices.
So our next step is, um, we're going to share this report with the board, throw it up on the website. And then we've asked these fellows to, um, develop some sort of easy to digest, um, maybe video that we can put out that's explaining the results of the poll and all that. So, um, we'll keep the board updated on that.
I will say this, I, I truly believe that when it comes time, there's going to be strong opposition that didn't show up here. And it's all going to be centered around, why are we using taxpayer money for this? I think just like we did the cooking classes, which have a, a benefit of helping people to become more healthy. I think a lot of the things that we could talk about doing in the center can back up helping people be more healthy, both physically and mentally. And I just want to stress that maybe we need to start do two things. Maybe we need to start looking at how much it costs to rent like the downtown library. Okay. And I know about the branch because I've had, I've been to birthday parties there. But I think we also start needing to start looking at things like, well, if you wanted to take exercise classes, how much does that cost? You know, all the kind of things that we might do there, how much is it going to cost a person to do?
Well, and the other side of that conversation is honestly like, I, me personally, I get excited that my tax dollars are used this way because I know that there are a lot of random ways that I don't know where my tax dollars are going to, or they're going to have zero impact on me and my community. This is something where I can go, oh, cool. My tax dollars actually make this possible that we have a community center downtown that we can, uh, take care of everybody, that there's affordable space for people to rent. And now we're driving, uh, any type of nightlife, weekend life, day city life downtown, and we're moving people around. Like that, that gets me really, really excited. And when I look at all of the different ways my tax dollars are being used, this is actually one of the ways where I cool, I go, cool. This has a direct impact on me and my community.
I'm the same, I'm the same way. Like, uh, I know when my tax dollars are being used for, I'm not careful. Like when they do free lunch, you have nothing free. Somebody, okay, I'll pay for that. Like, I don't care about paying for that.
And see, I'm the opposite. I'm for it. But I'm hearing too many people who say are more conservative and, uh, who are complaining about, uh, people get free breakfast, people get free lunch. But they don't realize that you actually financially would be paying if those kids weren't getting breakfast or healthy breakfasts or.
There's a cost to doing nothing.
Right. There's a cost to doing nothing. And I just can't emphasize enough, you know, maybe one time a group of us can sit down and just list all the possible things beside like weddings and birthdays can happen at the center. And then how it benefits our, 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 our resident, how benefits, first of all, our low income residents, like with the cooking classes, how it benefits, um, society in general, because I'm telling you, um.
Well, these are, this is one of those discussions on externalities. And essentially like when, if you're doing something that is promoting community involvement and connections, you're actually decreasing crime. Like that's a fundamental.
Yeah, no, and I disagree, but I think.
And nobody, nobody thinks about that. And the way to quantify it and put it out there, like, if you can, I mean, there are ways to do that that we could talk about.
Right. And I think we, given, um, what's been happening politically in our area. Okay. I think that we need to be ready with that argument, Ryan.
Yeah.
Because we've been getting more conservative people who are not wanting to see these kinds of things happen. Am I making any sense?
Yeah, I know where you're coming from.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm trying to say it without saying it.
Yeah.
So, uh, I'll say, I'll say it for you. What do you say?
Definitely.
Happy to let it continue or?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. So appreciate it, guys. Um, I'm going to send this up to the board. Follow up questions. These guys are at your disposal.
Okay.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Alton.
Thank you.
Yeah, other than business. We do. And I'm just, just as an aside, the, I, I, I've seen a lot of these surveys and stuff. And the, I, I will say these guys were top notch.
Yeah, I believe, I've heard of them.
Yeah. Okay, um, our next item of new business here is Helping Hands Lease Public Hearing and Vote. This was publicly advertised out of an abundance of caution. That this would be a hearing that anybody could show up if they opposed it or not. But he's here. Helping Hands is a tenant, um, right next to us in this building that we basically inherited. We just really restated the lease that they had, same terms as before. They're actually now paying that they will pay the township $4,500 per month as part of their lease for the state that's there. Terminable with like 90 days notice. Don't quote me on that. It's, it's in there somewhere. But, um, very, very standard stuff. Alex is on, um, he drafted it, worked with them to make sure they were comfortable. We've really established a great relationship with what those folks over there, what they do. And I mean, in a way, it's very supportive of what we do. It's very similar populations. And so, um.
Now, tell me what they do. I, I was assuming they were a home health employee.
They are. That's what they are. Yeah, essentially. They help facilitate home health.
Okay.
For folks, a growing industry actually. So it's, uh, they've got a couple of different branches. Um, this is their South Bend branch. So she's got one over in La Porte as well. But, um, that's basically what this is.
We don't need to take a vote on that, do we?
Uh, I think we do. Yeah. I think the board needs to approve it before I sign it.
To approve their lease?
To authorize it, yeah. We are their landlord. That's right.
I was gonna say, we are the landlord. Yeah, it makes sense for us to.
Alex, did you want to chime in?
Yeah, I can explain that process just a little bit that, um, Indiana law has, um, for any government entity has, uh, a number of requirements, a number of boxes that need to be checked in order for public property to be either sold or purchased or leased. So there's a provision in the Indiana code that requires, um, the township to hold a public hearing and allow the public to comment on what the statute refers to as the disposal of property. And that includes a leasehold interest. So, um, it's an idea of, again, it's, it's trying to prevent a scenario where, uh, government resources, public resources are being leased to friends or, you know, whatever the case may be. So it's, this is a vetting process. This is part of the public transparency process. So this is a lease that was assigned to the township as part of the purchase of the building. So it, it kind of was a, it's kind of part and parcel to the purchase. So, um, it's, it's not my opinion that, that, um, this separate public hearing needed to be had in order to have the lease assigned. However, now that there are changes to the lease being made, and, and again, these are pretty, um, pretty minor changes, mostly giving both the township and the tenant the opportunity to terminate the lease with, with some prior notice. It also reduced the lease term from three years to one year to give the parties some more flexibility, particularly with, um, the township's, um, proposal for the building. So because those changes are being made, they're still in that space, thought it was appropriate to have, uh, to, to give the public the opportunity to the extent anyone would be interested to, uh, to, to comment. The lease is, uh, I've prepared it. Um, the tenant has agreed to it. Um, I have it cued and ducky signed for everyone to execute. So it's, it, it is, it's ready to go. I think it's appropriate. I think it appropriately protects the township, um, with some additional language that I've included in it. So, but I do think the board needs to entertain any public comment and, um, and then approve the lease, uh, in the form that I've prepared.
Is there any increase in the rent that they're paying?
No, the, the lease interest, um, under the existing lease, so which again is, is currently in force, is 4,500 bucks a month. That's inclusive of, of all costs. So it's a gross lease at $4,500. That, that term remains in this amended and restated lease.
Well, do we need to make a motion, right?
We need to make.
I would, yeah, first, I would first, um, invite public comment, um, look around the room, maybe look in the hallway, see if there's anybody standing there waiting to, uh, wait to say something. And then, and to make sure that the minutes in the record reflects that, that that invitation has been, uh, been set. This has been noticed. Uh, Jason submitted this to notice through the newspaper as required by statute. So the public has been made aware of this. And then at the, uh, at the, at the chair's closure of the public hearing, then I'd recommend that the, uh, the board vote to, um, to approve the lease as proposed.
Okay, public hearing. Is there any public hearing? There's nobody in the hallway to light her up.
Or under the table.
Good thing. So, uh, I made the motion that we approved the lease agreement as written by our attorney, Alex.
I second.
All in favor?
Cheryl, yeah.
Yes.
And yes.
All right. So go ahead. Thank you. All right. Will do. Send it over to me, Alex.
Okay. Do you have a floor plan? Is there a floor plan I can append to it?
The one we got was like outdated, man. So I don't have a current one. Sorry.
We'll just.
World of John Friedline. Um, we already changed the locks, by the way.
That's what we did.
We've already been hearing some stories. So, um, we don't want anybody helping themselves with the building, you know?
Well, they just use bricks these days.
Oh, yeah. That's a good point. Cinder blocks. So big announcement, um, hopefully this week, um, is that we are going to be announcing our partnership with Real Services to, uh, transform the 133 North William Street into a senior, uh, community center, programming being run by Real Services. It's being discussed at their board meeting tomorrow, which I'm a member of their board. So we're just holding off on any public announcements until their boards have the opportunity to take a peek at it and just make sure everything's good. We're expecting renovations to be completed this month. We're going to spend the next two months decorating, uh, Real Services applied for a grant to buy furniture. The folks want to come in and paint it. We need to stock the library, do all kinds of stuff, buy board games and these kind of things. So the plan right now tentatively is to hopefully open, to announce it um, after both boards have, you know, your board, our board's aware of this, but after their board approves it, then announce it and then, you know, start drumming up support for it, membership and that stuff, and then do some sort of riving cutting, um, at February 1st. So what we have here is we thought, Alex.
You put the senior up front.
Don't worry. I'm not done yet. Alex and I had, uh, Alex and I had some, uh, we, we thought it best that we though do some sort of formal agreement between the township and Real Services. So what he landed on was putting together a vendor agreement. Essentially the township's going to contract Real Services and provide this programming for us. It's just they're going to do it for free. So that's the language that you have in front of you. It's a contract like anything else. It just doesn't cost them any money and we're not, we're not hurting. It's not going to cost us anymore.
Yeah, we're not charging them.
We're not charging them rent. Nope.
I'm assuming we will maintain the building.
It's all our billing. They, they have no responsibilities towards that. I will tell you, there is still a pharmacy that's interested in possibly, um, joining in there. That's a really big deal for, for folks in the senior community world. Is having a pharmacy at the center. There is a pharmacy, a locally owned pharmacy that's, yeah, it's in the Matthews building right now. She, she came over there and took a look at it. She was interested. So that remains to be seen. And that probably would be an, and a, that would probably be some money attached to a lease like that. But this, no money attached at all. Yeah.
The only thing I would say is should they not be able to get a grant to help buy the games and all? I would then hope you would come back and be helpful about.
Well, I thought that you might say that, Cheryl. So in our meeting, I said that I'm sure the township, we had this discussion yesterday and I said, and we basically, Carla was asked, what's the fallback plan for Real Services if they don't get this grant? She kind of looked at me and I said, well, I'm pretty sure my board will have no problem purchasing what needs to be done in the building. But I will come to you before that one comes, but.
But I'm just saying. But I'm just saying.
I didn't wanna speak for you, but I said I feel like the board's very supportive of whatever you need to make this successful. They have the money for the programming.
For the staff.
So.
Well, yeah, because as I said, that was, I think they were two people who said. Why doesn't the mayor have something for a senior citizen?
Sure.
So this is the lease, we have to vote on this too.
We would, yeah, we would ask you to vote on this. And then my last note, just um, as an aside is, they also, Carla would like to in, to institute an ambassador program. For the senior center itself, with seniors themselves that are going out and like acting as ambassadors and all that, and she'd like Cheryl Ash to consider being one of those. So I was asked to ask you.
Yes.
At the next.
I voted Cheryl.
Who is a senior now?
Carla said immediately, uh, she, she was asked, well, who do you, who do you have in mind, the marketing company said, who do you have in mind for the ambassador program? She said, right now, only one person, and Jason, can you ask Cheryl Ash if she would be interested in being our inaugural ambassador? I said, well, I'll ask her.
Sure, I made a motion that we absolutely vote for the Real Services vendor agreement.
Uh, give me just a moment to look through.
Obviously, when those announcements happen, the whole board will be invited and make a big, big deal.
Maybe to uh, uh, sorry, has the motion been made and seconded?
Uh, Mohammed made a motion and Cheryl seconded, but Ryan, Ryan's reviewing the agreement, so there's no vote yet.
It's just for the board's edification and, and Mohammed, I think just responding to a, a comment you had made, this, this is a, this is a vendor agreement. So this isn't a, the pharmacy would probably be a lease, this is, this isn't a lease, this is a. Um, this is basically giving uh, Real Services the opportunity to work inside. What is otherwise going to remain the township's building, the township's responsibility, there's no, there's no transfer of interest, uh, leaseholder otherwise there.
Right, I'm glad you said that, so.
What is?
So we, I'm gonna go to make a different motion that we approve the Real Services vendor agreement.
There you go.
Cool, and so, I, I mean, what are they going, what's the idea? Is it just like a social community center, is it?
Uh, there's all kinds of programming that they've got planned, it's, the idea is to start with, with what they're doing now, but like then start growing it into things. So there will be a social component, card games, public room and library, but no actual classes, programming. As in.
Carla and I had talked.
They could do a vaccine clinic, yeah, I mean, they'll use it for anything.
Yeah, Carla and I had talked about, for instance, uh, some places have once a month. Uh, the Bar Association provides an attorney to come in to ask, you know, answer people's questions. Uh, some other places that she and I know about, they have a pharmacist come in to help people under, or a nurse to come in. To help people understand their medicines. So, yeah, it probably would start off social.
And the, like, they would have someone staffing that space?
Yeah, they're providing all the staffing, right.
Okay.
Yeah, they're providing this, what she told me was, when I talked to her, she said, getting the money for staffing is easy. Getting the money, huh?
Getting the staff often is less easy.
Well, no, she said that wasn't hard, because they tend to hire seniors who are already retired. She said the problem was getting a building. There's not money for a building, but there's money for.
Staff.
For staff.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, there, there, there's, there are differences can be a lot. Now, Jason, let me ask you a question, I mean, I told you in. I was questioning, because you're on this board, though. And you're also the trustee, uh, what's that look like? I mean, like, how, how could that bone out?
So their board won't even be required to vote on this, and if there were, I would just abstain. Um, but there's, we're not gaining anything here as a government entity.
Right, so you're, so. It's not like you're giving anything out of it.
No, they are.
Right.
Oh, no, it's a good question, and uh, Tim Emmerich is on their board, their executive board, he's a managing partner at Barnes and Thonberg, so. Um, if, I don't have a conflict of interest here, but if I did, I would just abstain from it.
Yeah.
And I think to that point, I think disclosing it here is appropriate, I, I mean, that's um, you know. Uh, there's no conflict, no conflict for the trustee, there's no personal remuneration to the cut, to the trustee, I think, through this arrangement, so that, that doesn't implicate that issue. Um, I, 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 I think, um, so from the township standpoint, even, uh, um, I don't see a conflict there.
Only other thing is, I wanna make the comment is, that I think we should be ready. Should the parks and venue ask us.
I agree.
Well, you know, there's already senior centers.
I kinda put that in Carla's court, is my thought, because you, you asked that question six months ago, and she answered it for you, so. In my opinion, she's the subject matter expert.
Okay.
Real Services just came to us with this need, and we're fulfilling that need.
Right.
So um, my thought has been to say, well, Carla explained why, and she'll tell you the need of a centralized, they don't have a centralized place, they're doing it here, here, here.
Right.
They want a central.
Have her write something up that we have in case we're surprised. You know, like somebody at church asks me, I can say. So have her just put something together.
I will, okay.
Alright, I mean, I'm okay, uh, I'm not seeing issues, I'm okay with it.
Right, so the motion is made.
I have seconded.
All in favor?
Girl, yes.
Ryan, yes.
Thank you. Last note on that, at some point in the near future, South Bend Heritage owns the parking lot behind the building, and it's always empty. So we've reached out to them, and they just finally emailed me back, they're interested in some sort of deal where we can lease that parking lot, because. Our, our, the parking is decent, but if it's, if you're gonna have a cloud of seniors there, they're basically.
You mean adjacent or behind?
It's behind the building.
Behind.
Oh, that one, okay.
Yeah.
There's one other thing about that, like, I know that in the past, we had the Neighborhood Association did things at our old office, so we should try to.
They did?
Yeah, they have a few meetings there. Not when you were here, though.
Well, actually, I met with Kathy Schu last week, and I, I let her in that we were doing this, and she was ecstatic.
It was, it wasn't the near northwest, it was the.
It's the nerd north, it's the nerd west.
The one, it's.
It's like almost the same name.
And they could still have meetings.
Uh, what was her name?
They had them in the evenings.
Oh, that would be fun.
We just haven't had any in the last couple of years, sir.
Anne Manning. City now, but, yeah, I'd be happy to have a conversation with her. So the only changes is we've gotten rid of the wall.
It was a West Washington, and it's got a north complete.
And if you remember the wall in the trustee's office, with the little break room there, that wall's gone, so it can be a big harbor.
Well, basically, my thinking is I'd like to make sure Real Services keeps it open, keeps it available for that.
Well, I think it'd be on us, but yeah, that's no problem, so, yeah, that's great, that's a good point, we absolutely could. It's our building, yeah, yeah.
Our biggest problem right now is, I need to kick everybody out of the parking lot, cause they've been parking.
Yeah, we. We gotta go put signs up. The, the businesses nearby have gotten a little too comfortable.
Yeah.
So we'll probably put up some signage telling people that they can't park there anymore.
Yeah, yeah, I was looking when they first started that new website.
Yeah, uh, I, I'll reach out to Anne, that, that, that's no problem, thank you for that note. I have no old business, so I'm gonna move on to the trustee's report.
I have something for old business that I've mentioned that before, like, just making sure, like, the website's updated. It's got our minutes, it's got all of our videos linked. Like, we've been pretty good about taking those, and with people complaining it's not available, like, I just wanna make sure it's on there soon. Um, and we're doing a lot of different things, so making sure people can look back and find it sometimes.
Yeah, absolutely, so it's all updated, I got your note about that before, and uh, apologize for the gap there, what happened is we. Um, updated the website in July, and uh, just frankly, never got around to transferring it all back over, so. Then we did make that a priority, though, happy Ryan gave us that dope, so it's all updated on there now, and the YouTube also has all the meetings on it, and is now linked from the website.
Okay, well, I thought I checked today, and I didn't see any of that.
But none of the updated minutes and all that? Well, yeah, it's all in there.
Well, I understood the email today, like, you've briefed.
So he's adding, he's adding lots of stuff to it. Um, but if you open up the folder, the folder, it's under twenty twenty-four, it's all in here, see? You just gotta go through each page, and they all are minutes and agendas. But if you see something missing, let me know.
Is that under?
Under research, you under resources.
Yeah, and then he linked to the YouTube page below it. Uh, six oh three, but I still have items.
Okay.
But no, I mean, Ryan's got the floor.
Um. Board meeting, okay, yeah, I, I thought that was, cause before there was just one on there.
Um, so we organize it better, I had him make it twenty twenty-four, so then there'll be a folder that says twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
That's the idea.
Alright, that'll make sense then. Okay, that's all.
Alright, thank you for that. So I wanna update on the twenty twenty-five budget status, my only note there is we haven't gotten uh, DLGF approval yet of our tax uh, ex, excess levy appeal. Any, I mean, really, at any moment, I've heard of other townships getting theirs back, so um, what our plans are for next year are a little bit on hold. As far as what, what's gonna be possible, so um, I just wanna give you that update, but as soon as I know, you will know. I wanna talk about twenty twenty-four budget uh, real quick here, so if you can pull up those numbers, uh, that report you have, there's some things I wanna point out here. So we're at the time of year, and thank you to Lana for your work going through here and reconciling and forecasting the remainder of the year. We are, um. I can, I can skip ahead about budget now, well, I'll talk about this in a second. We're expecting our assistance numbers to be fine on there. But we've had. Very last one, yes, the budget numbers.
I got you.
So um, really, uh, the assistance fund is gonna be fine, all the other funds are gonna be fine, and what I would call your attention to is the admin fund, general admin. And we're going to need to do an additional appropriation, like we did last year. Last year, we had to do it for assistance, because we didn't budget enough for shelter. We rectified that with this year's budget, and we're, we're doing pretty good exactly with what we forecasted. But we've had three things that came up this year that has led to the need for an additional appropriation.
Okay.
And those three, three things are very straightforward. So basically, we're going to need to ask the board to do a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in additional appropriation. We have it in cash reserve, so approval from DLGF won't be a problem. The good news is, it's not that we overspent. A hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and let me explain. If you recall, we didn't get the bond money until February of this year. But we had big payments that we had to make for work that was done in January, that immediately blew part of the budget. So about a hundred thousand dollars of that, we already reimbursed ourselves back on the bond, but on paper, we blew that. A hundred thousand dollars, you know what I'm saying? It's just on paper. And then another thirty thousand dollars is in fire territory. The formation of the fire territory, we, you know, we have staff, we've had staff salaries now, we've had legal fees, we've had consultant fees. Um, we've been tracking all of those fees with the expectation that the board, the fire territory, when it gets money in January, is going to pay us back. So that's money that we're not technically going to be out, but it did blow the budget. The last one is money that we're out, and it's about thirty thousand dollars in legal fee. The vast majority of that was Cedar Glen.
I'm fine with that.
And that big, and another big chunk of it was the purchase of this building. All the back and forth, Alex, who is, you know, having to be involved in all that kinda stuff, and, and other folks, so. But the Cedar Glen one, it really racked up over time, we knew that was a risk going in, um, but there's nothing for you to do today. But I just wanted to let you know, we've had to publicly notice it, that at our December nineteenth meeting. We're going to ask for that additional appropriation to make the budget look clean for year end.
Okay.
But I just didn't wanna, I wanted to be very clear that we did not come off a hundred and sixty thousand dollars extra.
So it was a hundred thousand for kind of the work that had to be done, thirty thousand in fire territory, thirty thousand in leaving.
Approximately, right, yeah, roughly, that's right.
When you say work that had to be done, does it, what are you talking about? Is that the work over the other? Building or work?
Uh, both, uh, design fees, um, some of the fire territory stuff, uh, the fire station stuff had to be done. When we uh, initially did, uh, some work there, but yes, at the building, the roof, um, we did, when we repaired the brick out front. We also did extra washing of the building and these type of things, so, and then um, when we um, modified this building. Put in the wall and uh, create kind of the, the private area of here, those are, those are our capital expenses. So the two areas that it'll go into is personal services, and we're gonna create a capital expenses series that you will see in the next budgets.
Uh, well, I have no problem that we spent thirty for legal fees, and uh, whether for this building. Or for Cedar Glen.
Were we, is there anything coming from insurance?
We did get some from insurance that covered the building getting hit, that piece, but we also put in extra, um, you know, those big planters. Uh, they didn't cover any of that, and then we had the whole building washed, um, and all that, what else was it? Something else we repaired over there, flagpole.
A flagpole.
So, but it was reimbursed, like I said, it was, wasn't cash we were out, because when we got the bond, we used, it was all capital. And that's all reported to the IRS. So, any other questions on that? I just wanted, I didn't wanna hit you in December, um, without giving you that heads up ahead of time. If questions come up, let me know. Um, I noted this in the fire territory meeting, that, and I just kinda mentioned it now, that in January, we're expecting to ask the fire territory to transfer funds back to us. So um, you, we will just notify you when that happens. Um, for Mohammed and Cheryl's benefit, we um, actually um, are expecting to get a decent check now from Southwest Central Fire Territory. For the money that they're holding that belongs to the Portage Township, and that will go into the new fire fund, that's, we're expecting about one point five million, which is nice. That will be combined with the four million dollar loan that we're getting, along with money that we expect from Warren Township to sort of kick off the new territory. It's really good news. Um, so that's what I had as far as Southwest goes.
Somebody talking about paying one point five million dollars, I mean, like.
Well, it's, it's basically money they owe us, you know, it's our money.
That's a debt coming back.
That's right, it goes in the fire fund, but it's nice, because you know, our concerns are getting this thing rolling, we don't get it, we don't get a payment until June. Um, those are our big items there, and then, oh, Columbia Cleaning here, we did wanna let you know that we stopped using the cleaning service. For this suite, and we are now also responsible for cleaning the uh, front area there. We have an employee that requested. Um, that she could use the extra money, so we have stopped using that other service, we, with Alex, we put together a policy in place. But I just, we really wanted to let the board know, we are paying an employee after op, for after hours work.
Clean.
It's per hour, it's all documented, Alex has helped outline the policy for that with Lana. We, we feel everything is fine and on the up and up, but as the extra layer of transparency, we just wanted the board to be very well aware of that. We are paying an employee to clean after hours. No cleaning is allowed during hours. Um, no, you know, nothing like that, everything that, you know, if she, if she's got time on her hands here, she can't get up and start dusting and that kinda stuff. It's only on after hours, yeah. Um, no, it's just important that you guys know that. Um, oh, and then the three forty, so uh, this, this, Ryan, I thought you might be interested. So one argument you're gonna hear sometimes from folks is, well, you got this big building now, the maintenance costs, maintenance costs. We went and ran the analysis, the maintenance costs are not that much, aside from what we were paying already. But the good news is, what we're getting from Helping Hands is, covers the entire maintenance for, for the entire month, so. It's a total wash for the township at this point, so basically, there is no increase in costs there. I don't have an update on Saint Joe County Fire Territory, um, unless you have one, Ryan, for these two.
And I can't really think of anything, everything sounds like it's going on schedule regarding the. Uh, employee hiring and formation, we've delayed the merit board, so we can get the hiring done for this year. Um, we will revisit that next year. Uh, I think those are really the. Only things. Just did in, okay.
Okay, only thing I was gonna add was, um. You know, I told you all last time I had met with some of the people over at Cedar Glen, they're having still problems. You know, some days he works, some days not.
Yeah, it's getting cold, we need to.
So, what I did is, um, people at my church bought one hundred thermometers. And all, um, and I made a form, Jason ran it off for me. And uh, and so I'm gonna meet with uh, Rodney, and then I, I can't remember the man's name, he lives there, and he's kinda been organizing a lot. To have them start uh, passing out the form, and basically, it's the date, it's the date, time. Um, first column is date, second column is time, third column is. What room, entire building, entire apartment, or is it just one room? Uh, when they called uh, maintenance people, and when maintenance people got it fixed. And so they're gonna be documenting that. Then, now, this one I had to ask you, when I get that, and uh, with them, do you want me to contact the Attorney General?
They, they, we should be consistent and tell them that you contacted.
Okay, right.
It's up to you, I, but I wouldn't do it on, I wouldn't do it on their behalf if I was you.
No, I wasn't, I wanna tell them, right, I'm trying to organize them, so they begin to understand how you make your case.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And this is a sideline, but I did not realize there are so many places in South Bend. That are having heating issues. A friend of mine is a nun, and she told me about their heating issue problem. And she lives in a, a rectable, you know, I mean, not a low income building.
Sure.
She doesn't live in a low income building, she lives in one of those. She doesn't live in a low income building, she lives in one of those really nice buildings out near Great Road. And I'm hearing more and more people were saying, the issue is these old boilers. And, uh, but don't worry, I didn't send it to you.
Well, you can, it's just, we're trying to, we've done it, we, we just now have gotten them used to like, no. We took you, we, we took, we took this where we can take it, the Attorney General's office, so. No, thank you, Cheryl, well, there is a way we can support that conversation.
But it was funny, we were.
We'll rack up those legal bills with.
Yeah, it was so funny, cuz I got up at church and I said, I need one hundred thermometers.
That's so cool.
It was in the bulletin last week and some people had already bought them, and she came up and gave me some money, and then she said. I need to keep one of these thermometers for myself, and I said, why, Sister Betty? She said, my heat didn't work last week. And I go, you live in a, like, eight or hu- nine hundred dollar.
That's why we need that property inspection program.
Oh, I do have one thing I would like us to, to think about. Okay, and that is, we have a meeting with code enforcement and. You saw where I, I forwarded you the stuff. About that residential inspection, I would like us to have a meeting with these people to find out what they are going to do.
What they, so I have a meeting with, I finally, she took about a week, I have the. Uh, a meeting with the neighborhood specialist person with code enforcement is. I was going to ask about their property, cuz I wanted to get notes for our property inspection program. That and, and kinda let her know what we were planning to do, so I'll, I, I have lots of questions, if you wanna come or you have thoughts, let me know.
Well, if I could come, I will open my mouth, but, I mean, this, I'm hearing more and more people coming to me, telling me. That they're having problems, yes, I knew about Carl King, okay? And I had known about Beacon Heights, but this has floored me when other people are telling me. The problems they're having with their heat.
I'll send it over to you, the meeting. Um, cuz I actually was excited to get that scheduled.
Okay, yeah. Because technically, this should be a city issue.
Yes, what's nice is the township has a, a big carrot because rather than issuing a fifty dollar fine if the tenant is brave enough. File a complaint, a third of our referrals come from landlords, and we might be possibly paying six, seven, eight hundred dollars in rent. And they want that check, so what, the one thing we do bring to the table is they've got a big reason to want to play ball. And if we can at least just start developing relationships with landlords. That's, that's the goal, I think, from the outset, but we need to put a whole policy in place and get it in front of the board before we do that. So we wouldn't be ready for January anymore. So we've got time, is wrong with that? Um, help first grant, the good news is that we were awarded the grant again. We didn't get the two hundred thousand dollars that we requested, but we did get sixty five thousand that we had for this year, so. We know we're going to be able to do at least what we've continued to do, we're still pursuing the possibility of, of. Getting a donated R V or bus and retrofitting it, and that's all happening, but I did wanna share with you guys the good news. We were, uh, were awarded that, that grant, so we're very excited about that. So we will have that again for next year, coats for kids, you guys were there, it was about a hundred and thirty six kids, so I wanted to let you know. Um, and when you look at our assistance budget, you know, the clothing went like this, twelve thousand, thirteen thousand dollars, so.
And I've gotten asked, when is it gonna be next?
And that's awesome.
And I, and I will just say that Meyer for the second year row is great to work with, their staff, um. Their sense of community coming from their leadership too, so, you know, just kudos to them, and I like, I know they're not here, but.
And in the past, like, that clothing budget has barely been used as far as I recall. Yeah, that might be a good thing to actually post out there, like, oh, look, our clothing budget has gone way up, so everyone can complain. And then you put out like, oh, and these are all the kids that we bought.
Pictures of the kids.
But I mean, you put it out there, let people react, and then it's like, yeah, we got, you know, coats and shoes and boots for kids who need.
I did wanna let you know, I, this is our friend, Commissioner Dieter. I don't know how real this sort of thing is, but when I was up there, they mentioned it, and then he's mentioned it to me again. He is really on a save the Portage Manor grounds warpath. I forwarded you guys that report that he, um, commissioned, and it's amazing, if you get a chance to look at it, it really floored me. And he really wants, he doesn't want any of it to be developed, but at minimum, he wants, you know, big, big places ported developed. Um, he kinda casually asked, you know, the, the county parks department refuses to do it, and apparently they can't make them. And the city parks department isn't, isn't interested, so he kinda casually said, what could Portage Township take this over? And I said, yeah, we could, and I said, I mean, what does that look like? So, he got real excited, and I said, well, it'd be a board decision, but we could, we can have that conversation, I don't know how serious they are. But I just said that I would run it by you guys, and if it got serious, that we can talk about the idea that. Basically, oh, so if we transfer that to Portage Township, would you guys promise to preserve it, blah, 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 and I was like, I mean. That's up to the board, but that's the question.
Transfer what?
A hundred and thirty acres.
Including the building?
Yeah, they bake, the buildings are less, I mean, the building is kind of a problem, but like, just the grounds, consider the grounds for a second.
Here's my.
It's really the grounds, if you've ever like really walked out there, it is a really amazing place.
A little bit, cuz I worked, I thought I didn't wanna be a librarian anymore, and I worked there, here's my problem. Okay, here's what my problem is, he is, but here's my problem. If you sell anything, if you sell one brick, okay? Then part of that one brick needs to come to us because now we have a cemetery to maintain.
Well, sure, yeah, I agree.
So, you know, they're talking about, for a while, he was talking about any of that sale money would go to. Uh, Mishawaka for a handicapped.
It went to Mishawaka, yeah.
Okay, my problem is, anything that's from the sale of anything that belonged to Portage Township. And, uh, should, some of that money should have come to us to maintain this.
So, the update, I, I, you're, I agree with you in principle there, they are talking about giving us a cash payment. When they finally transferred over to us, I don't know, again. They, every now and then Derek calls me and says, hey, where we at in the cemetery, and I'm like, uh, we're sitting here, we said we'd take it, so.
Yeah, because legally, we have to, don't we, if it's an abandoned cemetery.
Yeah, it's not technically abandoned yet, but like, we're, we're trying to be good, basically, they, it, it's just, it's on their end, and so. Pete Agostino called me, he promised he was gonna get it moving, Alex, if he hasn't reached out to you, he said he was gonna reach out to you, so. We're, we're ready to accept it.
Well, I don't want it unless they're gonna give him the money.
And I wanna say something in discussion real quick, and it's.
I still have three more items, but go ahead.
Do you?
Yeah.
Where?
Written down right here. I've been marking them off.
No, you got some right here.
Well, quit taking off, I'll solve on dangers. Close my loop and then I'll give it all back to the board. I built it all up. Trinity Cemetery is a cemetery over off State Road Two, that's one where, that is going to be abandoned, there's a, it doesn't have a diocese anymore. And so we were contacted by them, so I just wanted to let you know at some point, that's probably gonna be deeded over to us. Um, and then my last two things, holiday parties, you got my invite. After the na- the next board meeting, I would, I'd like the board to come out with us, Lana and I.
Okay, yeah. You can book me now.
Okay, so, let me know if you can make it, go where you wanna go. After our next board meeting, just immediately afterwards, we just go out.
Yeah.
Hopefully, you're okay. We're not saying that, we could just go out and have pizza, okay, last item. I just wanted to give you a heads up that at some point in the near future, I'm gonna come to you with a plan for a staff retreat and a board retreat like we did last time. I don't have the details around it, uh, my wife has been doing leadership consultant communication training for the staff, she's been doing it for free. I can't ask her to keep doing it for free. So I've actually spoken with Sherry Pete, if you remember Sherry, she's in the same business, she's putting together a proposal to come do it for us. I just wanted to give you the heads up that at maybe the next board meeting, I might put that in front of you. Okay, I'm done.
Uh, security, bro. Are we paying somebody, are we gonna pay somebody to be here?
No, so Zakowski's gonna, did I know? So we had Zakowski out here. We had Zakowski out here the week before because we wanted to put in floodlights on, uh, and, and, uh. Motion detector floodlights on either side of the building, we've having them come back out now to say, look, I mean, look how dark it is back there. So they're also going to put motion detector floodlights on the back.
And the front.
Uh, and the front, uh, but, no, we didn't consider hiring a security guard, I mean, that would be very expensive.
Yeah, we have, may I?
Please.
Uh, trustee, may I interject? I did have a brief meeting today, um, a communication company with all these cameras that were left here for us. Um, we had a little bit of a, a conversation about adding a couple of P T Z cameras on the front and backside. And the motion detected too, and there's gonna set up a perimeter, so if anybody comes close to these, um, it will, um.
Alert us.
Alert us, and it'll, it'll also send up an alarm to them, so it almost like scare them too, like, so that.
Okay, that makes sense.
And we're gonna, yeah, so we, yeah.
Uh, a laptop was stolen, the window was broken with a cinder block, we don't know where they got the cinder block, cuz we don't have cinder blocks around here. So, um, it was a Monday, Thursday night?
No, it was a Wednesday night into Thursday.
Again, my plug was Zakowski Construction, I texted our guy there, within two hours, he had a crew here. Loading it up, so, very appreciative of that.
I think at this moment, my, my opinion is these cameras is a good start to that, especially if, if, uh, you know. You can put it on his phone or whatever, so I can, besides having it in the building, it'll kind of alert us when, you know, there's any kind of activity possibly going on. So, and then plus, I think it will detract with that alarm that will go off, and I think you could probably speak to it. You know, hey, you know, what's going on, and the floodlights for Zakowski too, so I, I think that's a very good start.
The redesign of the building would take security into consideration, so let's say, what can you do in the meantime?
And just a note, as we were discussing before the meeting, uh, Jason, some townships do have their own police.
Yeah, I mean, it's worth looking at, Alex.
Know that until someone.
Just to, uh.
But Alex is.
Told me that.
Alex, I, I, Alex, I've kinda joked with him in the past, but I have broached the subject of. Is there some arrangement that we, the board should be considering that we're now going to be responsible for five pieces of property all over the county? Do we need to consider some sort of our own after hours, you know, someone who's just roaming around, is that a facility? I don't know, but I'm open to workshopping solutions to that, cuz we're now gonna be operating and maintaining two buildings here in South Bend and three fire stations, so. That might be overkill, I don't know.
Uh, I mean, our fire stations are always manned, right, twenty-four hours?
They are.
Yeah, okay, my only suggestion would be that we should look at security. Not so much as a security officer, but as security for the staff.
So it's funny you say that, Cheryl, my focus has always been less on, if somebody breaks in and steals things, fine, I've been more worried about them.
Because this is my, I can tell you about working at the library.
I know, I bet you can.
Okay, somebody would get mad. Because they said return the book and we didn't have it returned, I mean, it was a lot, like, it was like three hundred dollars worth of stuff, okay? And we have had some people, when I worked at the library, kind of act like they were going after the staff. Right, but we had security guards, I'm not saying you gotta need.
No, no, that's why we maintain separation, you know, between the staff and.
Yeah, I, that's all I'm saying is.
Also, Crow reached out and said, they heard about what happened here, the C E O there did, and they've been having lots of issues as well. They have a security person who's here during the day, because prostitution, drug dealing, their staff are getting hassled. I have a meeting with the South Bend Police Department Friday to have a conversation, because really, I think a solution here is. They've got roving patrols over in Howard Park, and I've seen these officers, they stop in the businesses and just check. Or, I think our ask of them is just walk across the river and do the same thing here, maybe pull your car in here every now and then.
But, we at the library had.
I mean, like, it seems easy, like, you know, like, uh, city police do that, I mean, they just ride through schools.
Yeah.
Yeah, what I'm gonna say is that the retreat at the library, we had someone come in. Who specifically worked with us on safety things. This is a minor thing, but he had us draw a line on the floor with the tape, and. We took the tallest person, which was me. And I had to lean across to try to hit someone in the face, and then they marked it, you know what I'm saying? And so when someone started getting angry at you, we slowly walked back. So we were behind the tape on the floor because that was how far a person couldn't reach us. So, but I would really, for part of the retreat, maybe, have a specialist come in and talk about. You know, how, what do you do when somebody gets irate?
That's true, I mean, luckily, our staff, Jamie, are very good at that, but you're right, um, the good.
You're gonna always get a crazy person.
No, good techniques would be nice.
But that's all I have.
I got to my item.
I did have a, a quick thing that came up with, just reminded me of it with the retreat. Uh, I know when we did that, we had originally talked about doing like a report from all the places we visited. So I threw something together since I haven't really seen it, I'm gonna send it to you, Lana and Jason. And if you all wanna add, because that should be a thing also, I think, on, on the website. About like what we saw and some of that.
But it will also help explain why we have added.
That's the idea is.
You know, we added, um, the social security, we're looking at, you know, adding a housing inspector. Not like we thought this out of the blue.
It's funny, and Ryan's right, I've said that to people multiple times, like, we're really just copying what other people are doing, and I mean, that's, that's what we.
No, we're, we're not being successful.
Well, you're right, that's what I mean, but like property inspection, all it's being done, community buildings, I mean, every place we went to had one. Nourishes the thing that we're doing that's very unique. No, but yeah, great point.
So I just shared that with both of you, if you can hop in there and actually look at it and correct or note, that would be good for us to have something on that.
Yeah, I'm excited to see what. Earn your money, earn your money.
Yes.
Yeah, I have to go do training, I have to do five trainings on behind one, and they're twenty-two minutes apiece.
What are the topic?
Gotta go Riley.
This thing you do in school. I wanna do these before the end of, before the end of this week, cuz after this week, I don't want nobody bothering me till after New Year.
Thank you.
I was gonna buy the dinner, the holiday dinner, will that get you out there? Where do you guys wanna go?
I'm going to the Migo and Jiggle.
Wherever it is.
St. O' Five?
Okay, wherever it is, just make sure they have other things besides beef.
Oh, yeah.
Cuz I'm allergic to beef.
That's right, I need that.
St. O' Five is pretty good.
St. O' Five is early.
Yeah.